...rededlement, please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with the roll call, we'd like to welcome CNN publications. They are going to start taping town meetings and then from there go on to either YouTube or something, but we'll get more details later in this, so just want to say welcome to CNN publications. Mrs. Malinowski, ask for the roll call, please.
Mr. Tippie.
Here.
Mr. Conley.
President.
Mr. Troxel.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Getzler.
President.
Attorney Oshin.
Present.
Chief Cruzan.
Here.
Deputy Chief Carrison.
Here.
Chief Dalling.
Here.
Deputy Chief Zagraki.
Here.
Mr. Pintuck.
Here.
Mr. Hewitt.
Here.
Mr. Volkman.
Here.
Raffertyl.
Present.
Jan Smaldowski.
Present.
Minutes of the December 9th, 2013 and December 30th, 2013 public meeting, pleasure of the board. So moved.
Second.
Given a motion and a second and discussion. Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Any additional claims, Mrs. Malinowski?
No additional claims.
Pleasure the board.
Move to accept claims as presented, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second and discussion. Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Correspondence or reports?
No correspondence or reports.
Staff, I mean staff. Council members? Okay. There is no old or new business, so I'll take any business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Hearing on this meeting is adjourned, we'll move on to the water board. I'd like to call the order to the Water Works Board meeting for Wednesday, January 15. Roll call would be the present council members minus Mr. Troxel and Mr. Conley. First item on the attendance minutes from December 9th and December 30th, public meetings. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, soon our vice may say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Claims, Mrs. Malinowski, any additional claims?
No additional claims.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor, soon our vice may say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Correspondence, Mr. Volkman on water?
No correspondence or reports.
No old business, no new business. Any business from the floor regarding waterworks? Any business from the floor regarding waterworks? This meeting is adjourned, we'll go into utility board. I'd like to call the utility board meeting for Wednesday, January 15. We'll go back to the original roll call with all five members as members. Minutes of December 9th and December 30th, public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, soon our vice may say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Claims, Mr. Malinowski, any additional claims?
No additional claims.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, soon our vice may say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Correspondence, Mr. Volkman on utilities?
No correspondence or reports.
Reports from council members, there's no old business, no new business for utilities. At this time, we'll take any business from the floor regarding utilities. Any business from the floor regarding utilities. This meeting is adjourned, we'll move into the town council meeting.
I'd like to call the town council meeting for Wednesday, January 15, Public Works to order. Roll call is the same as utility board, all five council members are here. Items are minutes from December 9th, 2013 and December 30th, 2013 public meeting, pleasure of the members of council.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing on all, in favor, soon saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Minutes are approved. Any additional claims, Mrs. Malinowski?
No additional claims.
Pleasure of claims from council members.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing on all, in favor, soon saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Claims are approved, five moved. Correspondence, Mr. Volkman?
No correspondence.
Any reports at this time?
I have none.
Both of yours done, engineering done. Chief Cruzan, any reports?
No, sir.
Any reports from the police?
Just one, Mr. President. First of all, good evening. What I wanted to report to you is last week at our border safety meeting, we routinely gave our annual reports and alleged items, and I can go over all of that, but I felt one was relevant that the council should be aware of and the public should be aware of. As you know, every month we report our crimes, uniform crimes, to the FBI, known as the UCR, Uniform Crime Report. And we report it every month and then we report an annual report at the end of the year. I am happy to report, we had some outstanding numbers this year. A year ago, in 2012, we had 1,009 reported crimes in the town shareable. This past year, we had 847, or a reduction of 16% in reported offenses in the town shareable, so I just want to commend the men and women of the police department for doing a great job, and I just want to make sure the council and public was aware of that.
Chief, that's very good news. Now, what gets reported in that, obviously, 2013 number, 847, what includes those numbers you've reported?
There's seven categories that were required to report to the FBI, and NAR, criminal homicide, forcible rape, robbery, assault, burglary, larceny or theft, and motor vehicle theft. Those are the seven categories that we are required to report mostly to the FBI.
Well, I think those are very good numbers, that's the right direction when going in. You know, some of the positions we have as councilmen, making sure our police and fire are protecting our residents, and it looks like we're in the right direction, so keep up the good work, both police and fire, appreciate those members.
Thank you.
I want to make one comment here. Good job to the Public Works and Police and Fire officers now regarding our emergency snow removal and weather we had last week. I know it was a tough job to get that, with all the snow coming down and the conditions that were there, freezing conditions, but I just want to publicly say, good job on that. Is there anything at this time regarding that subject? Jeff, you want to report on it?
We did submit the preliminary cost numbers to the Homeland Security website today. Our high two-day total was at just under $58,000, and our total cost on cleanup for Public Works was $105,000.
Just a question, Jeff, that $105,000, under normal conditions, what would our cost be? Are the, are the, is this 105 over and above or normal?
That was total cost. Above and beyond normal, a storm, a typical storm would be about $25,000 to $30,000 to clean up.
So in perspective, then, solid costs for that, so, mother nature. Council members, any other questions?
Could you differentiate between the $58,000 and $105,000?
For reporting requirements for the preliminary numbers, we are required to turn in our highest two-day total. That $57,000 reflects Monday and Tuesday of last week, the costs incurred for those two days.
So the $58,000 is the highest two-day total, and $105,000 is the total cost to cover the entire storm?
The entire six to seven days we spent.
Now, the $58,000, we can potentially be reimbursed due to the state of emergency?
Completely depends on FEMA and whether federal aid is approved for this event. My experience has been, don't hold your breath. We've been reimbursed on some things I didn't expect to be, and, you know, two years ago, or three years ago, in 2011, they didn't qualify that storm, so it's hit and miss with them.
Did we do a significant amount of plowing with our trucks on Route 30 and Route 41?
I wouldn't call it a significant amount. What happened was Sunday afternoon, I was out in a plow truck helping, and there was nothing for me to do in the office, so I'm in to plow. And we were, I had a radio that I could monitor the police department. Well, we had a good portion of our police resources tied up on US 41 because the bridge was iced up. People were getting halfway up the bridge and sliding back down. At that point in time, it took me about an hour to put it together because we're typically not geared up for gang plowing. But we put together four of our large trucks, one of our small trucks, plus myself, I was running interference in the rear to keep people from trying to pass the plows. We gang plowed both 30 and 41. It took us about two, two and a half hours to do both roads, from north end to south end and east to west on both roads.
Just one time?
Just one time.
Okay.
Now, that being said, we, when our trucks are using that roadway to go to and from their plow routes, they don't pick the plow. If the road needs plowing, they leave the plow down.
Okay, so you wouldn't estimate that to be a significant cost to, I just wonder if it's worth trying to send something to INDOT to get some type of reimbursement for that?
I will say that we lost an amount of time in our routes, you know, pulling four trucks out, plus a floater that helps. We lost during the height of the storm. It took a good amount of effort to catch up on our mains, pulling them. But I will also say that once we got those two roads clear, we freed the police department up to handle the other calls.
That's very important, obviously. Thanks, and good job.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Jerry, just to add to that, because that was one of the things I wanted to bring up tonight. You know, if it wasn't for our guys out there doing 30 and 41, we really would have been in a worser jam than what we were. And I really do feel that, you know, we need to call the state on this. And I think we should have a letter written, tell them that you're very disappointed in the way that they handled it, and tell them that, you know, that we should be reimbursed for the time and money that we spent here in the town shareable to get the state roads cleaned up so our people could, you know, get around. The other thing is, that I was kind of concerned about, that I have had people call me about, even though Klein Avenue, you know, we're not in charge of that either, but, you know, there are constituents that are complaining about Klein Avenue. Now, I take it, correct me if I'm wrong, that is, the state is responsible for Klein Avenue also, correct?
Oh, no, that's both the rules here.
Klein?
Yeah, Klein.
One over on two?
No, I'm talking.
North of Bridge Road.
North of Bridge Road, it's State Highway.
State, that's what I'm talking about, that's where I'm getting the calls. And I mean, of course, you know, they all shut down and everything, but, you know, I mean, they can put some money into that. I mean, the governor, the previous governor shut it down, and now it's just kind of falling apart. And there are people that are going to the mills and people that are, you know, using for casinos, but I mean, mostly the people that are going to the mills and the people that are traveling that new route to get into Chicago. And I don't know if any of you guys traveled that, but it's definitely one of those deals that I think, since we're going to run for the state, I think we should put some concern to that also.
Well, I would support the motion if you were to make one, to send a letter to INDOT requesting reimbursement for our expenses, just to make a statement that we are out here picking up slack and, I mean, I, I don't, it would be okay if we knew that it was our responsibility and if they would subcontract us to do it and we could buy the equipment to do it and be prepared to back them up. I don't have a problem with that, that's something that maybe should be considered, but to be obligated to plow those streets and then just leave it up to us randomly to take care of it took away from our other snow plowing efforts, and I think they need to know that.
And at this time, Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion that we get a letter sent to the state to reimburse us for the time and the efforts that we had to put into Route 30 and 41.
Okay, there's been a motion presented.
And I'll second.
Would that, would that letter be drafted by Mr. Oshin or by Mr. Volkman?
By the President.
Okay. With that, so there's a motion and second. Any other discussion? Hearing on all, in favor, soon saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Motion carries, good motion, gentlemen. On that same note, I just think that, you know, we need to use common sense in these times of emergencies, and I know some people are afraid to go on state roads and doing things, but I think that, you know, with our police that were tied up on there, you know, Jeff using that common sense to go in there and do that is what we should be doing. I know it took away from the neighborhoods, but still, we have our own residents traveling these state roads, and they were in dire needs of moving forward, so, you know, there was some talk that not all complement of the INDOT trucks were in our area, that we would like with smaller, smaller complement of trucks, and obviously we had to pick up the slack, so if somehow that could be ordered, then have letters.
Certainly, Mr. Troxel, you know, a storm event such as that, all snow plowing efforts are taxed, you know, whether they're ours, the states, the counties, everybody has to put forth a valiant effort in order to keep up with a storm like that. I don't know where the INDOT resources were allocated or whether their resources have been reduced. Certainly, you know, we've seen this before in storm events like this where, you know, we don't see INDOT, and, you know, they have a lot, huge, larger responsibility than us, but certainly have a lot more resources than we do too.
And they carry the same responsibility that we do, that we have to our constituents to make sure that people can get around safely.
And that was the plan I was going to make, in those dire straits, you know, everybody pulls together, and we do what we need to do to keep the public safe.
Exactly. Good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, also like to comment and have Bob or Jeff send a comment, or a card or a letter to our contractors that respond to our need of Jeff's request on coming out to help us with the plowing and stuff.
We'll probably get a bill from them, right?
We'll have that coming in form of an RTP, we'll have it signed tonight.
I think that would be a good one.
The check will probably be approved.
But they, they need to be, they're local people, they need to be acknowledged, coming out and helping.
Well, I don't know, good point, you could have covered it, you know, with that, because they were used in a unique situation, they did come out, so, thank you, council members. Any other comments at this time from council members? Mrs. Malinowski?
No. Just the other side.
At this time, we're opening it to the public regarding agenda items. If there's any agenda items you want to publicly speak about, now's your time to do that. Any other comments on agenda, seeing and hearing done? That portion is closed. At this time, we have no old business. Next item is new business, which is Resolution 2014-1, which is a resolution authorizing approval to be entry into a joint annual co-op agreement with the town of St. John, Indiana, for neutral use and personnel assistance for building inspection and permanent review services between the town shareable in Indiana and the town of St. John in Indiana in 2014, and all related to it. Mr. Volkman, can you comment on this, please?
Certainly. This is the annual renewal of our interlocal agreement to share building inspection services with the town of St. John at times that we need them. In the last year, I don't have the report right in front of me, but I believe we supported St. John to the two and above ten and a half hours, usually to cover four inspector when they're on vacation. Now, recently I understand that St. John is hired an additional inspector too, so I don't anticipate that need being there in the future or not as much. We did not use St. John services at all in Sherrville in 2013, but this is an annual approval of that agreement between the two communities. It works well and backing each other up in the times of need.
Thank you. Pleasure of the council members of 2014-1. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and second, any discussion and comments on this? Seeing and hearing done, all in favor, soon saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign. Motion carries five zero. Next item is item B, which is consider and discuss the joint local co-op agreement regarding 911 consolidation. Gentlemen, I know we've had this before us, back in December, December 9th, I believe, we had 911 individuals from the county talk to us, answer questions regarding some items. I know we were going to look forward to resolution and look at any other items that need further discussion before we move forward on this. And at this time, I'd like to open it up here regarding this agreement. Now, I understand there were some new revisions that were added in here just in the last few days. Is that correct?
No. This, I think, in my conversations with Chief Dalling, who's our 911 committee representative, this version that you have in your pack tonight was adopted by the committee in December?
Yes, and it was adopted originally, the first one adopted was the county council back on December 6th, should be, if that's the one you have, stated December 6th, that should be the final. President Troxel may be referring to the letter that went out to the Highland Town Council, talking about the hiring process, that maybe that was the latest thing that you would have gotten, maybe that was what you're thinking of?
I know I received something on that, thank you, Chief Dalling, on that. Anyway, this interlocal agreement dated December 6th. I know we had an opportunity, supposed to have us review it. We'll start with our councilors. Anything in this agreement you think that is of concern at this time?
It does not appear to me from reading, this is the sixth draft of this particular document, it sustained a large number of changes. It says it's on. It says it's on.
Oh, I should get into it a little bit.
Oh, lean in a bit.
Yes.
There appear to be several still open items that may or may not be major, depends on your perspective. There are questions about the funding and operation of 911 dispatch after January 1st next year, in the event that the consolidated dispatch operation is not complete. You will, by execution of a resolution authorizing entry into this joint interlocal agreement, agree to the transfer of your levy, or the portion of the levialable, to sending your employees out and joining the entity that will hereafter conduct this business. So on January 1st, if you've transferred your money, the system is not up, and your folks still are working, or there are people still working, they may be sent back here to David and to his team to work. They would, there would be a gap of connectivity, if you will. It's also a concern that if those folks who are sent back here to work in the transition to an ultimate entity that would be operational, those folks would come to work here potentially at a different wage scale and a different compensation package. And in fact, ultimately, compensation for the employee pool that will do the work will be set by the late county council and the county commissioners, and it's likely that that compensation package will not be what you provide. So that's a concern. There's also the mechanics that may be operational and may not necessarily be policy for the agreement, but might be important to you and to your citizens. And that would involve, or include, or could include, how dispatch occurs for who will respond or who will be contacted for emergency services such as Chief Joe and his ambulance team and paramedics. Who will be called? How will that work? So there's some operational, there's some budget, there's some transition. The present agreement contemplates everything working perfectly, that through the course of this year, there's going to be a process of building a plant, if you will, or a system, transitioning through the last quarter and a half of this year into that, taking the money that your levy transfer permits to budget and going forward on January 1st. Theoretically, is what the agreement says or contemplates. The practicalities of it are, it probably will not be that smooth, and there will be gaps of how those things get handled. Unfortunately, you as the elected officials and the legislators of your town will be completely out of the loop by control of that. And it will be in the hands of others than you. So those are kind of some of the things that I read, observed, and have been paying attention to, and have heard, have been discussed, but not get resolved with the entity.
Council, you're pretty good with pointing the operational items there. You know, one of the other items after December 30th, 2014, who would supervise these employees? And they're not our town employees, and here they're coming to our building, not our employees, and I think it's been pretty well publicly mentioned that there's a good chance that the transition won't be completed by 12, 30, and 14, so I believe that that's a very good supervisory, operational issue that we should be concerned about.
You are responsible to your citizens, and you will be held accountable by them if there's an issue, a problem. The transition is not married smoothly to transition on December 31st to January 1st. And that's, that's pretty important.
Well, I, I mean, this is based on that, I think that's one of the items, I'm sure there might be a few more here, that we should ask for a response from that one person out there before we act on this this evening.
Do we know when the new site is expected to open and be operational?
You have two chiefs. Yeah, you have two chiefs who go to the meetings, so.
Yeah, there's, there's a timeline that's been put out by the committee and by, by all this discussion on interlocals been going on for the last several months and come a long way in that regard, but all the committees, human resources, facilities, finance, everyone's been doing their due diligence, working on the timelines. They hired, or made a recommendation, hired deputy director this past meeting, that's done. There's a timeline for information to go out to dispatchers in February, all the current dispatchers in the county. There's a timeline for all of that, that will be, that if remains on schedule, will be completed by December 31st, 2014. The timeline right now has the dispatchers to be hired in August, training to start in October. Now, is that a aggressive timeline? Yes. And is it likely that we are probably going to carry over a few months into 2015? I think it's probably likely, but we just can't really say that at this point. To the issues that Mr. Oshin spoke about, I think it came up last time they were here, and there will be a logistical issue there, obviously, of who's supervising them, but I know if we transfer our levy in August, come up January 1st of 15, they're the county department's employees, and they will be paying them. They may be working out of our building, but they will be paying them. That cost won't fall on our town. I think they answered that last meeting, but I know they discussed that at recent 9/11 consolidation meetings. Okay, yeah. So, so they, I guess logistically, we don't have all those answers for you to say for sure it's going to open on time. The likelihood is that you might have a slight delay, but it's going to be pretty close to being on schedule, I think.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Dalling, is any more comments in your meetings about a backup, a backup center, and what they're going to do for a backup center?
Nothing new, other than what was said at the Nothing new, other than what was said at the last meeting, and that was that the E Chicago site is still the backup site, but before they can address that, the focus is getting this site up and running.
I know, I know, last month, there was some discussion regarding, I think, a lot of it regarding the financing of the capital expenditures, and how that would be financed, whether it would be property tax based or maybe suggested as a revenue based item, so I don't know, I don't think that's been addressed at all. I haven't heard anything last month, again, I don't know if anybody else has. Or had, Chiefs, have you heard anything in your meetings that, how a capital expenditure of the, what do you think?
Actually, the recent finance meeting had to be postponed because of the weather, and the next finance meeting, I believe, is, they were either ninth, Dave, do you remember?
It is February twentieth, actually, it would be just prior to our next scheduled consolidation meeting. And at, at past finance meetings, obviously, that issue is in a, following with the Lake County Council. It's been discussed at our meetings and the intentions, we've been told for that to be a revenue bond, but I, that decision hasn't been made yet, and I don't think we're going to know that until the, our piece of the bids and all that type of stuff come in and see what that dollar amount truly is.
It's to be determined, actually.
Mr. Chairman? David, when you say revenue bond, what does that mean?
From my understanding, the revenue bond means that it will be paid for out of, of the county's lowe.
So it would be the county's lowe and not a proportional share or percentage of the lowe to be distributed to this town?
That's correct. Definitely, definitely not the lowe to distribute to this town, I think that is actually, I think that's it.
Right, and that was one of the revisions that we understood, Mr. Austin, when they presented it to us at the meetings, is that, that fee was not going to be put out to the communities any further, so that we would be able to retain those funds, and that's the way you understood it, Chief?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
On that note, first, even though the funds do come back to the town for us to spend, it creates the additional possibility, the possibility of additional taxes to our residents. And the income tax was passed in part for the purpose of paying for this program. So I, I don't, you know, I, it might be a big windfall for those of us who are, you know, public officials, but the taxpayers are catching the short end of that move. I would also like to say that going back to the second site or the dark site, if, if the dark site is part of the, let me back up one step further, if we're going to put budgets in our, in our interlocal agreement, they should be complete. We shouldn't have holes and determinability later in our budgets. I mean, if you brought a business plan like this to a bank, you wouldn't last five minutes. I really think that, and I, and I know this is going to fall on a lot of deaf ears, but I'm going to say it anyway. The dark site, if it's part of the capital budget, it should be in there, and after four or five years, we should know what our costs are. It doesn't take five years to determine what it costs to build building and to staff a building. So I, I really think that, that the costs of the dark site and all of the costs in the capital budget need to be included in the interlocal agreement. Same with the operating expenses, the, the funding of the operating expenses, it's eight hundred thousand dollars short to be determined later. This is, this is, these are potential tax increases to our residents. That's eight hundred thousand dollars short, and we'll figure it out later. I, I hear that kind of stuff coming out of Washington, I don't like hearing it coming out of my county. So I, I'm absolutely opposed to incomplete, incomplete budgets in the interlocal agreement. Take them out, if you don't want, you know, if you're going to ask us to pass something with a budget in it, then make it complete, so we know what we're passing. Also, I, I believe that there should be caps, if you're going to put the budgets in and we're going to approve them, there should be caps. I don't think it should be, we'll just, after this, we'll just spend whatever we need to do to get it going. And if we're going to go beyond any caps that are, are put into the budget, into the interlocal agreement, the municipality should come back to the table and vote on an amendment to the agreement. If this, we can't have it both ways. And I think all funding sources should be identified. If we're going to have a twenty million dollar capital budget, and we're going to issue revenue bonds to be paid back with income tax dollars, then that's what should be said. I'm sure the commissioners can figure that out in the next thirty days, how they would pay for this. Or maybe they've thought about it over the last four years, as to how they might pay for this. So, and you know, I don't know how you, I don't know how you form this into the question, I have a lot of other concerns, but I don't think I spend a lot of time, this is my big concern. Essentially, if we, if we sign onto this agreement, we are sending authority to the county government to spend as they wish, to put this program together, and that's going to be on our authority. That's, that's what I had to say.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ever, evidently, there are a lot of questions and comments and concerns, fellow concerns that we have, so I really think we should defer this until we get the proper people back here to the tables to do some more explaining to us before it ever ends. I'd like to make a motion to defer.
A motion to defer?
Second.
A second discussion? One discussion I have here is, you know, I know we discussed a few things here, I would, I would hope that you maybe put something in writing to the nine one commission to have them address it, instead of having them wait to come for another month, of course. So my, my item would be is identify what we want to have answered, and have either Mr. Buckman or Mr. Austin send out a nine one commission, and hopefully get an answer to that before our next public meeting.
And I'll put that in a motion form, too.
And what, what are we agreeing to put in the letter?
Well.
Everything you've said, Jerry.
Thanks, Al. Well, gentlemen, we spoke a few different things here. We talked about the operational issues and how those will be worked out, and I believe they have not been addressed in this document here, but maybe they, they can address it, and how they expect to handle it. Two, we talked about the financing mechanism, what was the financing mechanism, they would put on the twenty million dollars there? I do know that the tomorrow, they have the digital openings for the, all these equipment expenses, so we should, we should see then, you know, what that number is, is that twenty? Is it less, or is it, is it more than that? And that would change numbers also, so.
Can I make a motion, though? I mean, it seems like our attorney has got it all so overlooked for, that he and the town manager draft a letter, send it out to us via email, and then once we get everybody to approve, we'll get a letter.
Good idea.
That would be my motion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Ross. Could I help with the motion a little bit? Can I request that council members give us a bullet listing of what your concerns are? We've listened to this, and we obviously are paying close attention, but Jerry, for example, didn't give us a comprehensive listing. You said you highlighted the most important.
I, I have it here, I'll give it to you.
And I'm certain that the others of council members are in the same vote.
All right, well then, thank you, councilor, we will, we will forward that information to our town manager, via written, via email, and the bullet points that we want addressed in a letter to the nine one commission. So there's been motion second, including all that information. Any else, councilor?
You might want to let your chiefs know that they were unreceiving it, but they're not, they're just, they're just the conduit.
You were just there to look at it.
Because they're, I should also.
You guys are doing a great job.
I should also ask both chiefs and deputy chiefs, are there any other concerns that you feel that need to be addressed in this document, or operation, or anything that you want to add? And if you do, if you do, then you can forward those information to Bob Wolken, all right? Move that way?
Very good, thank you.
All right, there's been a motion second, gentlemen. All, everybody seeing aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and signed. Motion carries five vote.
Mr. President?
Ross.
Are you all going to get those comments in the next three to five business days?
I would ask, by the end of the week, get those information to by Friday.
Friday noon?
Friday noon, so we can get a letter out by at least Monday. That's how good.
Right.
And then ask for a response, at least if we can, a week before our next public meeting, which is the twelfth of February, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, we, we do have a meeting on the twenty ninth.
We have a study session. Item C, which is ordinance number eighteen forty-six, which is ordinance admitting town zoning ordinance number eighteen thirty-three, being an ordinance admitting town sheriffal zoning ordinance number seventeen ninety-seven, and the town sheriffal zoning map replacement ordinance number eighteen twenty-seven. All amendments there, too, and all matters related there within. Mr. Wolken?
This is related to the approvals that we did in December for the Whole Foods development and the shops on Main.
So this item then is moving that Whole Foods project forward, shops on Main, as you said. Is one more item, this last item, either?
The, the next two items are related to those PUD approvals. See, on the agenda.
Pleasure, you. Mr. Councilor?
Substantial change was made in the PUD that you approved a year ago to accommodate the size and location of the Whole Foods parcel, hence necessitating under your ordinance an amendment to the PUD that was approved.
Thank you. Pleasure of the council.
So we need to approve ordinance eighteen forty-six.
Second. Second, any discussion? Hearing, seeing, and all, if you're seeing aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and signed. Motion carries five vote.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to the second, any discussion? Hearing, seeing, and all, if you're seeing aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and signed. Motion carries five vote. Item D is consider acceptance of amended planning development agreement between the town sheriff of Indiana and RV Sheriff crossing L C, shops on Main, and authorized, town council press to approve. Again, this is a same item, Mr. Wolken?
This amends the, the plan or the agreement.
Thank you. Pleasure of the council.
Will approve, Mr. President.
Second. Second, any discussion? All, if you're seeing aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and signed. Motion carries five vote. Next item, item E, consider acceptance of fire service contract between St. John Township and town sheriff for year 2014. I see the contract before us here, and I did read it, it looks like nothing's changed yet. Is that correct?
Yeah. You modeled the same as the one last year.
Right, except for the, here. Okay.
Will approve, Mr. President.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing, seeing, and all, if you're seeing aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and signed. Motion carries five vote. Next is, item F, is a consider approval of change order number one from A D Sewer for Hand Lane Water Main Replacement Project, increase in contract six thousand, six hundred two dollars even. Any expectation on that? I know we have some documents here. I know.
I can summarize. The, it was, in the original plans, it was shown that there were two inch water mains going up the cul-de-sacs, when in fact, they actually ended up being six inch, so was a change in materials, and that's facilitated that change in materials. And the next one, item G, is the credit for the two inch material that was not installed.
Mr. Chairman, a question? Yes. The, the additional materials, the price is based on a unit price in the original contract, is that correct?
The, the change in materials is a great unit price that's submitted by the contractor unapproved by Robinson Engineering and Jeff Hewitt.
Okay, thanks. Okay, item F, pleasure of the council.
Will approve, Mr. President.
A motion. Second, any discussion? All, if you're seeing aye?
Aye.
A motion carries five vote. Item G, pleasure of the council.
Will approve, Mr. President.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing, seeing, and all, if you're seeing aye?
Aye.
A motion carries five zero. Item H is consider recommendation from town manager and cook treasurer regarding ordinance number eighteen twenty-eight, fourth quarter bonus of 2013. Mr. Wolken?
After review of the near end expenses and revenue for the town sheriff, all the recommendation from Janice and I is to pay the employees the two percent bonus for the last quarter of 2013.
Mr. Wolken, or Janice Mountowski, is two percent bonus, thanks to what dollar amounts?
It's roughly about thirty-five thousand dollars.
Now, Mr. Wolken, you mean it's a point five of the two percent.
Correct.
Will approve, Mr. President.
A motion to approve bonuses for the town employees for the fourth quarter, is there a second?
A second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing, seeing, and all, if you're seeing aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five vote. Item I, consider acceptance of request to carry over additional vacation days due to extenuating circumstances, 2013 to 14. Mr. Wolken?
It's right, one employee that, due to some new staff coming on and required her to change her vacation scheduling, and her, you're allowed under the ordinance, and I can approve up to five days, in excess of five days, I always bring it to the council, the request is to carry over seven and a half days. So two and, two and a half additional days. And it was because the employee wasn't able to take that vacation because of training and employee.
All right, thank you.
Motion to accept carry over.
Discussion to accept, second, any discussion? Hearing, seeing, and all, if you're seeing aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries five vote. Item J, yearly donation to the Triton Safety Village, two thousand dollars. Anyone else familiar with this? I'd like to see us continue with this, I'm sure you will.
Pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion second, discussion. Hearing, seeing, and all, if you're seeing aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five vote. Item K, consider acceptance of donations of five hundred and ten dollars. Mr. Mountowski?
We have park donations from Stardust Gold Inc. for a hundred dollars, and then we have a listing of animal control donations. Nancy Turnball, seventy-five dollars, Nancy Riden, one hundred dollars, Gerald Novak, one hundred dollars, Thomas Harvick, fifty dollars, John Pila, eighty-five dollars, total four hundred and ten dollars for the animal control donations, a grand total of five hundred and ten dollars.
Pleasure of the council members on the lines.
Will approve, Mr. President.
Motion to the second, all favors, and aye?
Aye.
A motion carries five vote. At this time, I'd like to open up the town council meeting for business from the floor regarding town council business. Any business from the floor regarding town council business? Town council business, seeing, and hearing, and speaking, and thank you all.